Today, and I want to welcome on behalf of the board and on behalf of our college community, Dr. Thomas Keegan. We're very, very thrilled that you're with us today, all the way from Washington, way, way far away. Welcome to Florida. We're very glad that you're here, and I know that your wife Suzanne is here also. I'll let you introduce her in just a second. On behalf of our board, I do want to welcome you here, and I know that you've been on kind of a whirlwind tour for the last couple of days, and I wanted to just give you an opportunity before we move into some of the questions to just give us a few opening comments and some of your impressions of your visit so far.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. Suzanne and I are both very excited to be here. If I could just take a minute, I want to tell you a little personal informations that you don't see in the official materials. Suzanne is-
Is hiding over here.
There. Suzanne and I have been married, uh-oh. This is- We've been married. Yes. This is how I started this thing, although I did much better. We've been married 29 years on May 1st. And what I did earlier when I mentioned that, I messed up on the May 1st. I had the 29 years just like that. We have two children, two boys, Sean and Kevin. They are 19 and 16, and really the center of our lives. We, in that time, we spent kind of our twenties and our thirties, ages in our twenties and thirties, going back and forth, supporting each other's education. So when we first met, I had graduated from a community college, and then was working on my bachelor's degree when Suzanne and I met. So I finished that just before we were married, and then she went back to school, and she started, finished her AA degree at a different community college. Then I, it was my turn again. I went back and received my master's degree in student personnel administration, and then it was Suzanne's turn again to be a student, and she received her teaching degree. And then, here we go again, my turn to finish my doctorate degree in leadership and policy studies. And then our boys appeared during that time, and we just paid off our last student loan earlier this week. So we both come from the community college system, and we are very happy to be here.
Great. Excellent. Your first impressions of-
Oh, yes. So, first of all, so welcoming, but if I could pick a word, I would say proud, that the faculty and the staff are very proud of the college, and as they're welcoming, it's an opportunity for them, I think, to think about what they've been doing, what they do, a little chance to pause and reflect, because they have to think about what they're going to say. They are very proud, and you should know that. They are, they're proud and they're dedicated. The other word I would say, well, I think, the other word I would say is ownership, and that's the community. I've met with some community leaders on my own time, Friday and Monday, and there wasn't a person that didn't express, again, pride in the college and ownership in the college. And they said my college, I heard my college and our college three or four or five times in those couple of days.
That's great.
So, very excited. I'll maybe answer some more. I know, I know some of the questions, and I thought I would work some of those other impressions in there.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. As you mentioned, you have been provided with a list of questions that all the candidates received, and what we would like to do this afternoon is, we have kind of divvied up the questions amongst ourselves, and we will go through these questions, and just so you know that all 10 of the questions that you're going to be asked have been asked of the previous two candidates, and will be asked of the fourth candidate as well. However, depending on some of your answers, we may diverge into other topics, but we're certainly going to start with these questions. So, Mr. Johnston is going to start things off.
Doctor, why did you apply for the presidency of St. Petersburg College?
Well, I have to talk about being, becoming aware of it. The college has a national reputation for innovation, for sure, and I think achievement with, you know, the awards and recognition that you've received. I've been in the community college education for 31 years. I've been active at the state and national level. So I became, first became aware of St. Petersburg College because of that. Trustee Burke's leadership at the national level, while we've never met, I don't know him, caused me to get online and investigate this college, and I really asked myself then, I said, "I want to learn about a college whose trustee, who allows a trustee, supports a trustee, to be that active at the national level." And so that's where I really started to think and learn about what St. Petersburg College did. I saw the opening in November, and then I began doing my research. And I'll tell you the attractions. Number one is the baccalaureate education. I know there's a question later about that, and if you've seen my, I know you've seen my materials, you know that I've been a leader in Washington State in that area. So, the opportunity to help a college continue to go in a, in what was a non-traditional direction, yet maintaining the core community college mission is something that was very attractive to me. So that's, that's really number one. Two is the connections in the various communities that you serve, and in the diverse ways that you make those connections. That is a, very much an attraction to me. It's what I like to do. I get great energy from that, and I think it's a key part of our mission. We should look like the local community that we serve, and that's, role of the president is to help make that happen. Then the other thing related to me is the match, and it's very important, I know, for the board and for, for me, to make sure that we have a good match. And I looked, and I looked word by word, paid very close attention to the words that were selected in the announcement, and lined them up to see if they, if they matched me. And I was looking for, not, not tasks that you were looking for, I was looking at some of the values that were stated. And I saw a match, and that's, that's important to me. And then I also, in my research, looked at the time in an institution's life. It's, there's developmental sequences to that, what a college might need at one point in its life versus another point in its life, based on change of leadership in this case, or, or change of funding, or, or expansion, or retraction, and, and the time of my life and my career. And I think there is a great match there, and the more I've been here, it's, can reinforce that, that some of the skills that I bring and where I am in my career, and the kinds of things that I believe, that, well, that I know I've read and I believe that I feel and have intuited and learned here, make it a nice match. On a personal level, Suzanne and I discussed the opportunity, you know, we, we are always talking about our family and what, what we're going to do, and the boys' lives, and how it affects our careers. And, and so, you know, I did that research on my own, and then said, "Hey, Suzanne, check this out. We're leaving tomorrow." No, I didn't say that. We walked to it. And, you know, for us, the opportunity to live in a, in a, in a community, a different community, throw ourselves into that community life, the opportunities, I can sing the praises of the area, the opportunities in the arts, in the sports. We love the salt water. We're boaters. The salt water does, has a, if I do say, a spiritual effect on, on me, on us. We love to be around the water as a family. We love the outdoors. So you kind of take those, those things, the professional steps for me, the family opportunities for us, and then the match with the college values and timing in the college's life, and the timing in my career life, and it just, we thought it was a match. And I can only say that the more I've been here, and, and believe me, I've been looking to see, just as the campus community has on me, looking to see if those are real and if those match, and I'm pretty darn excited about it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Keegan, if you become president, what will you focus on in the first 30 days?
First 30 days, first, foremost, no question in my mind, is to begin building a relationship with each of you, with each member of the trustees. And then I think, I want to, I would like to spend some time as a full board and as a president. I think it's, I think it's critical that the six of us build a solid relationship that's built on, on trust, on openness, and on respect. And I think it's equally important that I listen, and that we work together to chart a course. And I think, I think you only get that started, I don't think you build a solid relationship in 30 days, but I think that's the first, most important task. If I could, I think, I'd like to go beyond 30 days, because there's some other important things that need to happen, in my mind. And two themes, and they're similar to, to our working together in 30 days, and that is, number one is to listen. I would hope, and I know it can't be done in 30 days, I know Courtney tells me math-wise, it's impossible for me to meet with every faculty and staff member within five years. She's done her math. And, but I would hope, and I, and if I am the person selected, I will do that. I can't put a timeline on that, but I would like to spend, as I've done before when I became a president, spend about 20 minutes, 30 minutes with each person, each full-time person, and, and get to know them a bit. And that's about building relationships with, with our faculty and staff. I also think I need to get to work very quickly on building relationships with our state and national political leaders, and our local political leaders. Just something, it's going to happen, needs to start right away, the relationship does, and they'll get more in-depth as I answer further questions about how to do that. Finally, I think once fall semester starts, I'd like to begin a dialogue about guiding principles, and you, you may have seen those in my, my writings and on my video. But I don't know any other way to lead or to be than to have a set of guiding principles. And starting with teaching and learning is at the center of what we do. And so, everything that we do, board, president, student services staff, maintenance staff, all of the support staff, is about supporting that relationship between faculty and students. That the, the essence of what we do, all of us, comes down to that relationship between faculty and students. And so as administrators, community leaders, support staff, we need to make sure that we are supporting students and supporting faculty, and facilitating student success and facilitating the success of faculty. So, that's, that's principle one, and I promise I won't go on so many on, on every principle. But there's a couple other principles I have to mention. They're core, and if I'm the person selected, that this is what you're going, going, going to get. We need to, we must, I choose the word carefully, we must treat each other with respect, we must act with integrity, we must be open and honest, and we must be collaborative. And so I'm, in those, it won't happen in the first 30 days, but it's going to, it's going to happen if I'm the person that, at first year, and I would say, early on, I would say, as soon as the faculty return for fall semester, we start a college-wide, at every site, dialogue with me leading it, facilitating it, about, I'll toss those guiding principles on the table and see where it goes, and let, let the campus community help me. My goal, frankly, would be by the end of the year, we would come to some agreement on some set of core guiding principles, and I would toss those out, and, and really, in a, in a professional respectful way, challenge the campus community to, the college community to, to embrace those or, or change those.
I also have the third question, so, leaders often talk about their skill sets. What would you say are the most prominent skills in your set?
Kind of in three areas, and it start, they start with a value for people. It's not a skill, obviously, but I think that value has helped shape my skills as I reflect on, on that. I think one first area is communication skills. I believe I listen well. I'm told I listen well. Suzanne doesn't always feel that I listen so well, but as a professional, I listen well. I, I, in terms of communication, I listen well. I, I think I can articulate a vision of teaching and learning at the center of a higher education institution. And along with communication, I think I have the, the ability to build strong relationships built on trust and openness, and I think that openness leads to trust. Technically speaking, in terms of skills, I think I have strong planning and budgeting skills, and I think I have developed very strong skills in political strategy and the bill, and the ability to raise money. And then finally, I'm not, I'm not even sure if it's a skill, but I have a strong entrepreneurial spirit. It's based on my belief that there's more than one way to get things done, and in fact, I think these days you must be entrepreneurial and creative to get things done, and those that know me would maybe question whether that spirit comes from my, might be coming from my unwillingness to hear that something can't be done, because if I hear that, it fires me up. Makes me want to, makes me want to try another way to get the, the good work done.
Thank you.
Dr. Keegan, I get to ask the next question, but you said something in your introduction which intrigued me, so I'm going to ask about that first. You mentioned that you were here Friday and Monday, and you met with community leaders.
Yes.
I'm intrigued is to find out, you, you're not familiar with our community, at least having never lived here.
Correct.
Who did you meet with, and how did you know to meet with them?
I have my sources, Mr. Trustee. I don't want to call out, I don't want to throw Amelia under the bus. So I won't say it was Amelia. I met with, and I, I can try the names, but I don't want to make mistakes, I'll go by, I did, I asked Amelia, told her I wanted to come down a day or two early and get to know the community, and not, not interview, but, but gather info. So I met with the county administrator, I met with a county commissioner, I met with a school district board chair, and I met with the faculty leader, and to get, try to get a sense of, of where St. Petersburg College sits in the community, and what some of the issues would be for me, and to, to learn about the community, and whether it's a place that Suzanne and I, you know, we, based on what we knew at the time, whether that would be a, a good fit. It was great. It was great.
My question is, what do you expect in a board-president relationship? And I have to tell you, your guiding principles probably answered that question, but go ahead and, you may have prepared some comments on this area. I have some specific questions to ask under this area, too.
Okay. Sure, maybe I could prioritize those. I think number one is, which is honesty, and that's that open, honest communication. And I, I think that honesty includes timeliness in how we communicate, and I think it's, it's my role to make sure that the board always receives timely information, never gets caught off guard. If there's going to be something in the media and the paper, or, or you're going to an event, you need to be prepped and prepared for success there. So I think that, and I, these obviously go both ways, but honesty is, is number one. Respect, I've mentioned that as a principle, you know, I mean, you're, you're right on in terms of those guiding principles. They don't change based on the situation or relationship. But I think we need to make sure that we have, or what I'm looking for, or what I expect is, is respect, both ways. Respecting who we are as, as humans, as people, and also respect for the roles that we play. And the third is mutual support. This is a, this is a complex task, many people, a lot on the line, and you're volunteering your time for a complex task. It's my role to make sure that you get support from me, and it's a complex task for me with many, many things, many priorities to juggle, and, and I need your support and would expect your support. And then ideally, a fourth one would be an appropriate professional friendship. It's, as you know, many of you know, it's lonely at the top, and I hope that I could come to you in confidence, and bounce off a frustration, or a thought, or bounce off an idea that I can't bounce off anywhere else, and that I would be able to trust that it would, you would be honest with me as a friend, as a friend would, and give me your, your perspectives.
I guess that leads in well to my follow-up questions. The first one is, in life generally, there's people we get along better with than other people. And here you have five board members, some you may be able just to feel a relationship just happen naturally, others it may be more of a struggle. So how do you, based on that, how do you keep it even among all board members getting the same information, and the same communication?
Well, probably use the, the same mechanism, you know, we should talk, and as a board, you know, first of all, we develop that, that personal, or one-on-one professional relationship, and then I think, as, as I mentioned in those first 30 days, we, we should get together as a board and president, and say, "How do we want to communicate? How do we want to relate?" Just conceptually or value-wise. We want to be open, honest, and timely in our communications. We, together, the six of us, need to develop a mechanism for doing that. Not, not me coming to the board and saying, "This is how we're going to do it." Coming together and saying, "Okay, how do you want to know if there's going to be, if there's breaking news that you want to know about?" Would be, would be an example. But I think we would need to sit down and agree together how we're going to do that. And then I need to be consistent.
The trustees in Washington, they're appointed by the governor also, I believe?
Yes, yes, same system.
How big was your board?
Five members, sir.
The other question I have as a follow-up is the involvement in board politics. The board's, one political function happens once a year, and that's the selection of chair and vice chair. What do you think the president's involvement in that process should be?
Nothing.
Okay. Good answer.
Thank you. I do, I want, if I could, on the, on the teaching and learning, if the president is working with the board chair on a board agenda, and the president's prime value is teaching and learning at the center, the board agendas are going to have teaching and learning at the center, and so that the focus of the board becomes teaching and learning. And my experience is, is, you know, the board, board issues like that don't arise, they, they melt away, because you're seeing students in front of you, and you're getting a, you're seeing faculty and staff in front of you, and you're, you're, you're learning about the great impact that your work and my work and faculty and staff work has. That's, that's the long answer to the question.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Dr. Keegan, you've had a chance to, as I said, you've had a tour of probably quite a few of our campuses. I don't know if you had a chance to visit them all. How would you go about making people on all of the campuses feel valued and equal?
Well, first of all, I would, as the president, it's important that I articulate the importance of serving all of Pinellas County. In my mind, you start globally, that it's the, the role of St. Petersburg College, not each campus. It's, first of all, the role of St. Petersburg College to serve all of Pinellas County, geographically, programmatically, demographically. You start with that, so that there's a, and then, then you go to helping each campus see its special role, and it's, and that it's part of something greater, so that no, no one site is more important, more, more valued, that it's really about service to Pinellas County, and each, it's just like I was mentioning earlier, as we respect our roles as, as board members and presidents, and we, the president, we see our role in the bigger picture. And that, that's the first thing I would start. I think, conceptually, and then I think my presence is an important thing, frankly. And I would expect, I, what I've done, it's a smaller college, but what I've done in the past, every month in the last nine years, is I meet with the faculty, and the staff, and the administrators, in the same week every month, so the day, the information is new, and I'm there, it's a, it's an hour and a half, and a half an hour of it is a prepared agenda. I meet with the leadership team and the faculty leaders, and we determine what we think is most important, and then I have an hour to, I lead it off oftentimes with, what's the rumor, scuttle, and innuendo, and get those things on the table, and address them. And, and then I hear what the other issues are that might be beyond rumor and scuttle, and I do that every month. Now, can I work that into the schedule here? I, I think I can, but, but we'll have to try it. But I should be at every campus on a regular basis, having that kind of open conversation. And, and so that's, that's kind of symbolic. It's also practice in terms of gathering information and being available. It's consistent with being open and honest. And then in practice, I think, you know, you have to ensure that the resource allocation is objective, that it's transparent, and that it's connected to our stated planning processes. All right? I want to talk about one other model. Shared governance is a, can I ask, have you heard of the term, worked with the term shared governance?
Yeah.
Shared and governance. So you take governance, and I, we have a, a, accreditation cited us exemplary practice for our shared governance model, and if you take those principles, I wouldn't ever come to, to the college and say, "This is how we're going to do something." Inconsistent with respect, inconsistent with collaboration. But I would come here and say, "Let me toss this model out for you to consider, and what works at one place won't work, you know, won't necessarily work at another." Been at five colleges, I've, and I've had, worked for, I think about nine or 10 presidents in my career, and I've seen how it does and doesn't work. And it doesn't work to come in with a scripted model, okay? But the concept of shared governance is something that I, I would toss out. This would probably be after, Trustee Gibbons, probably after 30 days, after 90 days, well into, after, we've got some other things done. But, but the, the shared governance model goes something like this. You take, you take governance, and you break it down to the types of decisions we make, decision-making domains. So we make decisions, as you know, board policy, we make decisions on budget, personnel, strategy, facilities. You take each of those, and that's a domain. And then you take the five campus constituency groups, students, faculty, staff, administrators, and the public as represented by the board. And for each one of those domains, we would develop as a, as a college community, a mechanism for dealing with that. So most relevant for the board may be policy. So we take that domain, and we say, "What's the, what's the board's role in policy? Ultimate authority in policy, you set policy. What's the president's role, the administration's role in policy? It's our role to give you good information, have you prepped, and facilitate good decisions for you. That's our role." It's also administration's role to live in the world of the policy that you've set. Same with faculty, staff, and students. So if we're going to develop a mechanism that keeps, keeps each campus feeling the same, and each constituent group feeling the same, you develop a, a model that ensures that. And in this case, what, what I've done in the past is we developed something called college council. It has three students, three faculty, three staff, three administrators. Every board policy, every policy that's put forward to the board first is vetted by that committee, and they, they are equal. You know, there's, certainly there's going to be some, some informal authority there. However, in terms of votes, they're equal. And over the years, the chairmanship rotates, and that comes to me, and then I recommend to the board based on that group. Now, in nine years, there's been two times when the policies came forward, where things that I didn't feel that were, were going to be best for the board, that they were going to need more information, or it wasn't going to work, and then, so I went back to the committee, and I didn't say, "No, it won't work." I said, "Here, here's what I'm, what I'm seeing from a board perspective. Let's see if we can't tweak that a bit," and we did. I'm sorry for the long answer to the question, but it's important to me, because it's, because it's a, it's a value of shared governance, and then we should develop a model, and that model itself, I believe, will lead us toward nine sites feeling like they are involved in our decisions and being paid attention to equally.
How many campuses at Peninsula College?
We have a, a main campus, the vast majority of our students. We have two off-campus sites, and one, each one an hour away, and we have a, a center similar to this one. We share with the school district and the economic development council, and then we do corrections education in Washington State. So we have two sites in penitentiaries. I don't go to those every month. It's a very, it's a very different culture, as you can imagine, and for what it's worth, it brings together two different cultures, an academic culture and a paramilitary, you know, security culture that, that makes it very interesting work.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have touched on a number of items relative to my next question. I know you talked about maybe a five-year plan to accomplish this, but maybe you can elaborate a little bit more about how you're going to build a relationship with the faculty.
Right. I think first of all is to, to listen, and as I mentioned, so I won't repeat the, the way to get there, but hopefully individually, and then for sure, the monthly meetings, and then whatever other mechanism that we develop together to have the president in contact with the faculty. I think to show respect, just in, in word and deed, is, will, will do just that. I teach myself. I love that process. I use, I coach. It's coaching is teaching, but I also teach as a professional. I love that process, and it's a good reality check for me. I just finished a class last week in our baccalaureate program in management, and what it cost me to do was to be a colleague with the faculty on, I had not used Angel software for the hybrid online education portion of it. I'm hanging out in faculty members' offices, getting some tips on that, and there's four other faculty in the program, and I was talking to them about students to help get a little, some classroom management issues and some coaching issues with the students. You know, as a president, you can't do that too often, but I think it's a good reality check, and it's a way to do that. I love to write, and I love to engage in academic dialogue, and so oftentimes what I do at those monthly meetings, I'll prepare a, a one-page paper, a white paper on a topic. I'll send it out in advance to the faculty, and then we'll chew on that thing. Shared governance is one. Online edu- Shared governance is one, online education is another, international education is another, professional development is those that I have done. So I think building a relationship with faculty is to spend time in, in academic dialogue. I, I led a development of a teacher-scholar model, took the, the writings of Boyer, adjusted them to a community college setting, to, wrote a, a paper, and, and worked with the faculty at Peninsula College on that. And the, the teacher-scholar model is one that values teaching and scholarship. And so it, it's a, symbolically, I guess, you could say that it in itself shows value toward, toward faculty. But carrying out that model, which is giving faculty time and resources to continually re-engage in scholarship. And it came to me as a vice president of instruction, where I hired 30 faculty members in, over the course of three years. And I was interviewing these, these individuals, and I was thinking, I am hiring someone right now, I'm, the president delegated that decision to me, I'm hiring someone who is going to do, engage in the essence of teaching and learning, right? The other half of that equation. First of all, I hope I'm hiring the right person, but I'm probably hiring this person for 30 years. And I need to make sure that I provide an environment for that person to grow, follow their spirit, their academic passions for the next 30 years. Because in 30 years, they should be even a better teacher than they are when they start out. So that's how I would do that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What role have you played in fundraising for your college?
Well, really, four, four major areas of fundraising. First of all is, is grant writing. And I, in the grant-writing arena, two things. I worked with, the first thing to do is to work with the faculty and staff to value grants. It's a cultural thing. Oftentimes, and I have not spent enough time to know what, what the case is here at St. Petersburg, but, but grant writing is a value of, of the administration, to get more cash. But I think you, you should create a culture, establish a culture of seeking grants to enhance teaching and learning. Okay? That's number one. Two, at Peninsula College, I established a, a office of grant writing and a funding scheme. We have, we had money in reserves, we gave, we hired staff, and we gave it three years to, to pay for itself. So every time we receive a grant, a cut comes off the top to go pay the salaries of the grant, the grant writer. We received over, well over $15 million in federal and local, private, and state grants in about four years. So very successful in the grant-writing field. The second area of fundraising, I would say, is partnerships. You mentioned some of the partnerships earlier. I, I think it's important when you're developing partnerships to seek win-win solutions, because you want to go back with that partner over time and do that again. And then to leverage resources. As you know, our public resources are dwindling, they're diminishing. We should be looking with the partners, and I know St. Petersburg does a great job with that, to, to leverage our resources. I have a number of examples. I'll tell you one very quick story, one example of building similar to this one. It's, we call it the Lincoln Center. It involves a regional vocational high school, different system here. It involves the local Economic Development Council, and involves the college's entrepreneurial training center, and it involves a business incubator. And so what we've done with our Economic Development Council is develop industry clusters. We have, we develop businesses to support those clusters, and we put our academic programs at the high school and college level there that support those clusters, so that students in those programs, clusters, for example, are, composites would be one, and green energy sources is another. So we're trying to develop businesses in those area. So we offer academic programs in those area, our students in those areas then can be, become interns in those incubating businesses. So that, partnerships, not to get too far off. Legislative work is twofold. I know there's a question coming on that, so I think I'll hold on that. The other one is resource development and the foundation. I led the revitalization of a, I would call it a dormant foundation, and I think they would, they would respect that description. I went through, and we retooled the board, we established new expectations, we began building relationships, and we began asking for donations. The efforts focused primarily on scholarships, faculty development, teaching, and learning. And then our first capital campaign, I talked them into their first capital campaign, and if I can tell a story, it's, I was asked a couple times what I'm most proud of. It's our Native American longhouse. We have six tribes that we serve on the peninsula, and they were disenfranchised from higher education, and I think they would say that, and I think the college would say we needed, that was also true. Part of our mission is to reach out to all, and we weren't reaching out to those tribes. I thought I would combine a, the most complex political task you probably could do of getting six tribes, six nations together with locals, and raise money around it. And as I say that now, I don't know what I was thinking. But we were successful. We built a longhouse as a, as a community center, and my, the story I kept telling is I want to get a nine-year-old Maccah tribal boy on campus in the safe place, in the longhouse, and see himself belonging on a college campus. And whether he comes to Peninsula College or not later in life, that's not my issue. I want him to, to see himself and go to college. And so that was kind of the, the spirit behind that. And we raised, we raised that money, and we opened that thing, and it was a career and life-moving experience on that opening day, to, to see youth and elders from the tribes come onto our campus and, and light up and celebrate that building. Our enrollment, and this was, this was a side, side issue for me, was enrollment. Our enrollment, it's, it's the Native American population is the largest minority population, but it was our lowest enrolled student population. It is now the highest. Native American student retention was the lowest, it is the lowest of all people of color in higher education in the country, and it is the highest in our college. And I, I attribute a lot of that to the symbol of the longhouse and the longhouse as a tool. So I tried, you know, in terms of fundraising, tried to tie it back to teaching and learning.
Thank you.
I get the next, ask the next question, it concerns facilities. I don't think we have a need for a longhouse here in St. Petersburg College. And we do have some beautiful facilities, as a writer, our vice president handles that, does an excellent job. I get, my question is, how would you go about, what is your commitment to making sure that we have the best facilities we can possibly have as we're competing against private, for-profit institutions, which are in a lot of times Class A office space, and we're competing against them? And we do have needs, you've been to the different campuses, Seminole Campus, it's a beautiful campus, but we have no science labs there. The Clearwater Campus has a library that looks the same as it did in the 1960s, and we need to modernize those facilities. What, what is your commitment there, and how will you go about approaching that?
Sure. Absolutely committed to maintaining the best facilities. I'll tell you why. The, the physical environment and the equipment, it, it sets the tone for, for the learning environment. If you are in, if you are a student or a faculty member in second-class facilities, you are, you have to work to see yourself in a first-class environment. I think it sends a message, when you have first-class facilities, to the students, that the expectations are high. And I have to say, I have to compliment the, the staff, the facilities are incredibly well-maintained, and, and I can see where the, the infrastructures are failing here and there, and then there are gaps. But it's, it's not for lack of maintenance and, and respect and pride in the facilities. So I think it's twofold. I, I think it sets, it sets the tone for the highest-quality educational experience when you have good facilities. Second of all, obviously, they're the tools, you know, the facilities and the equipment provide the tools. How and what have I done? When I arrived at Peninsula College, they had not had new construction in 40 years since the college was built, and the facilities were failing, and I didn't see pride in, in the facilities. So I led a process of developing a facilities master plan. I, the way we're funded in, primarily funded in Washington for capital is through a capital committee. I, I did one year on a, my first year on the committee that every first-year president has to do, and started building my relationships and weaseled my way onto the capital committee. And the next year, I was chair of the committee. And I started changing the, the rules as a member that would prioritize the replacement of ailing facilities over growth facilities. In the past, the only way to get a project essentially was to, to be in a massive, massive growth mode. So we changed those criteria, and coincidentally enough, it helped Peninsula College to compete. And we, we did, we did the plan, developed a plan, and, and actually, to tell you the truth, one of the criteria was to have a well-thought-out facilities master plan, which we did. That then, in, in eight years, we've replaced 60% of the, of the college. And we are in the middle right now of building a, the most, you know, an incredible arts and humanities building. We just finished a library, built a science and tech building. We're in the process, I'm working some partnership deals with the library, another unknown connection with St. Petersburg College, with one of the local cities, to have, to have our site and the library go together. And in the other off-campus site, we, is at a beautiful state parks facility, Fort Warden, and I've, I've just worked $2 million out of state parks, $2 million out of the, the capital fund in the system, and I've got two $1 million, I would call it technical term, chunks of cash that we've worked, so we have a $6 million facility that we're working on there. But that's, that's how I would go about it. Now, obviously, here, the legislative system is a bit different, and I can't remember, is it PERC? What's the, the name of the funds?
PICO.
PICO, yeah, yeah. Have to learn to work that, and those funds are dwindling, obviously. But I think by starting with the plan, and having that plan, and then looking at the long-term, building the relationships with the pub, with the public sector, including policymakers, is, is the way I would go after it.
Thank you.
What experience have you had with working with the state legislature?
State legislature? I'll give you a picture just for a moment. Two very similar higher ed systems, pretty similar legislative systems. However, there's one key difference, and that is, we're not, in Washington State, we're not allowed to hire lobbyists. So that's who I am. I've been the lobbyist for Peninsula College. I cannot call myself the lobbyist. The presidents, we, we call ourselves information providers, and it, it works for us. But technically, we don't lobby, but that's the role that I've played for the last nine years. I'll tell you how I go about it. It's be, begin by building relationships with our local representatives. But I think what's been very successful, and what I've not seen too many others do, is build relationships with the most influential political leaders in the state, including the governor and the, the key capital committee chair, and operating budget committee chair on both the House and the Senate side. So that, and I'm working on behalf of the system, but, but I'm being paid, and my heart is with my college. And so I build those relationships, and I think the key point is that you don't limit it to your own legislative delegation. You have to have those relationships with, with where the power is, where the decision-makers are. I found that, you know, nine years, become accustomed to building new relationships all the time. That, I don't know the legislators now in Florida, but I, I didn't know the legislators in Washington when I became the president, not, not the, other than the ones in my, my delegation. And so I, what I think that process about, is about in the state, at the state level, is that the legislators change, and the power changes, and it's up to the president to be, in this case, Tallahassee, both physically and intellectually, and work in the off, off-session time, and, and keep those, those connections going. I've, I've served as a chair of the, the most influential committees in our system in terms of capital and operating and legislative, and I think the results have been great. If you want to know what they are, I'd be happy to tell you. But we've made some huge strides based on that legislative work. And I've done the same. We have also, the, the college did not have a federal agenda, and we developed a federal agenda. And I know St. Petersburg has, has done that very, very well. I've done the same thing to build personal slash professional relationships with our senators and congress, congressman, and, and worked on a number of earmarked funding projects that, to support Peninsula College.
That's good. Thank you.
We sent you a request, and you answered in your, in your DVD about the baccalaureate degree program. And in your comments, I want you to expand on that if you would, please. You talked about working with the state legislators, and it's an impression I had that you were kind of in the forefront of establishing that baccalaureate program in your area.
Right.
And can you talk a little bit about that in detail?
Sure, sure. Frankly, it's one of the attractions, as I mentioned earlier, to St. Petersburg College. The fact that the board is supportive of that, and, and continues to support the balance with the comprehensive mission of the college is very, very attractive to me. My role and my thinking behind it is that, I'll tell you the, just kind of basically tell you the story of where I got there, and I think you'll see some parallels. That's what I'm hearing as I, as I've told this story the last couple of days, is that Peninsula College was number two, ranked two out of 39 counties in Washington in associate degree attainment, doing very, very well. Ranked 36 out of 39 in baccalaureate degree attainment. It's unacceptable. And they had been working for years to develop some partnerships, and just couldn't get it. So I, it, I proposed that idea. I started talking with my colleagues, and I, I didn't talk very long, and I didn't get much of a response. And they did, they were unable to, I think many, many come to grips that a community college could be offering baccalaureate education. I think it's a fundamental part of our mission, I do. I did my dissertation on the, this is a fascinating topic, the evolving mission of the American Community College. Steeped myself in that. And I know we are grounded in access and comprehensiveness. That's, that's why we're here. And if, if you are not providing baccalaureate education in a region of a state, then you need to do it in a different way than we've been doing it. That's where I came from. And, and the, my fellow presidents and our state board office didn't like that, just couldn't get there. One other president could. And so I went to the leader of the, the House Majority Leader, and we got a bill dropped that had Peninsula College as the only college offering baccalaureate. That wasn't going to go, I, I had to make, I had to make a call somewhere along the line that it probably wasn't going to last. It was, it, that, that, that bill itself was kind of a message sender, that we're going to do things differently. And if, if the system, the higher ed system wasn't going to do it, the legislature was. But I didn't think we had the votes, nor did the, the Majority Leader. So what we did, though, is we worked back with our system, and we got our system to agree to four pilots. And that was fine with me, because I, I knew we were going to be one of them. And so what the legislation that we passed was four pilot colleges for the applied baccalaureate. And that strategically, at the legislative level, was the best, best course for me. I think we could have, we probably would have lost if we had said we're going to be the only one. Different situation here, but parallel in many ways, I think. Then the goal, then the next step, so I, I worked through the, the heartache, the going toe-to-toe with the university presidents, who didn't see that as part of our mission, toe-to-toe with colleagues on that. I mean, there was disruption in our system. And so I, I lived through and succeeded through that process. The next evolution was, let's make this thing sustainable. We had earmarked funding, and then to make it sustainable, part of the deal, the, the legislature was interested in, they called it rational rules for growth. How are we going to decide where the next baccalaureate degree comes from? So they put together a committee, I was one of the three community college presidents, along with all of the provosts and the presidents' representatives from the universities in the state. We spent last year developing rational rules for growth, which included funding and approval models, and the governor, I'm told, I've been busy, as you know, the last couple of days, I'm told on Tuesday of this week, the governor signed a bill which was based on that committee's work that I was on. It, it removes the pilot status, and it does not touch the earmarked funding. Now, I know I've got to be vigilant on that if I'm, if I'm still in Washington, if I'm here, I believe I still have to be vigilant on that.
Well, that's, that's right. And I wanted to follow up, because it appears that our circumstances may, may be very parallel to yours in the way that you've worked your legislature, and you'd have to continue doing that, because it appears to me that we have a funding source that nobody else has, and we have the local control to establish baccalaurates that nobody else has. And, and when you're out front like that, of course, everybody wants the same thing, and the, the university system probably doesn't totally agree with that philosophy. So that's going to be a constant battle, I see, in the next several years with our legislator, legislative body, to create the additional funding that's needed, because you can't run a baccalaureate program on the same dollars you can an AA program. And some, some of the institutions are trying to do that. And some of the institutions are trying to do that, and that isn't working out well. And we've even had, I know there's been a lot of disputes between presidents here in the Florida, and we're going to need someone to strongly support our position, and hopefully, with the background you have, you would be one of, a person who would support us in the way this board feels.
It's an interesting process of St. Petersburg, timeline-wise, taking the same leadership role in the state, being successful, my work following by a number of years, and yet now the Washington and the work that I've been doing moves us ahead a little bit, in that we've institutionalized it, I think. I don't want to get too confident that it's going to work forever, but that the legislation that the governor signed, I think it brings me some pretty good experience that I could hopefully bring to bear here.
That's why I think your DVD was interesting to me, because it's, the baccalaureate program is something we want to continue and maintain, and we've been a leader throughout the state. And that's why I wanted to talk a little more about it, because you just, you alluded to it on the surface, and you can have a whole lot of time in the DVDs to really dwell into it. So I wanted to hear more from you about your experiences, and I don't know how much you know about Florida and the politics of it, but it sounds similar to what most states are in. We don't have any money, and we're trying to figure out what to do, and education generally takes a big hit.
Right. Well, I think we can, you know, it's the role of the president and the staff, I know we have lobbyists here, but the role of the president, for sure, to continue beating that drum about the importance of education, and the importance of access, and how it relates to our economic stability, and the importance of baccalaureate education, as well as developmental workforce and transfer education, the two level. I think you just, that you can, they can never hear it. Did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Keegan, I have a long list of your strengths and weaknesses, as provided by your references. And the strengths are fabulous, and they coincide with some of the guiding principles that you had talked about. Very principled leader, great leadership ethics, squeaky clean, lots and lots of good things. There are only two weaknesses listed on here.
Can you tell me who forwarded those here?
Your wife. I don't listen, but. I was about to say, one of them came in right after you were talking about your anniversary day. One of the weaknesses is that you will have to learn the Florida system. And the three other candidates that are in this race, two of which are and have been very involved in the Florida system, and the third used to be involved in the Florida system. So there's some history there with the other three candidates.
Sure.
And I guess, my first question is, do you think it's a weakness? And number two, what, how can you calm our fears that bringing in an individual as talented and creative and gifted as you are is going to be able to navigate the political challenges that the Florida system brings to us every day?
Sure. Well, I'd like to kind of separate kind of skills, skills. I believe there's conceptual skills. Those include critical thinking, strategic thinking, and the ability to reflect. Okay, so conceptual skills. I have those, and those, I believe, are the most difficult to attain. There are human relations skills, the ability to work well with others, to inspire others, and to work as a team, and relate, create relationships, the second. The third, the third one, I think you're talking to about, to a degree, are technical skills. And those technical skills, in my mind, would be, as examples, what's the funding, what's the funding mechanism? That's a technical skill. In order, those conceptual skills take the longest time. There's question, how much is trained, how much is inborn, you know, that you're born with. The next level, the human relation skills, no doubt, you can build those. They take a while to build. Technical skills are the, with all due respect, they are the easiest of those three different areas of skills to attain. And so, my task, I don't see it as a weakness, honestly. And if I did, I would, I would tell you, I think it's a weakness. I'm excited about it. It's really about learning a different system. So, how the money flows from Tallahassee to here, we have great staff. They know that, how that works. They can teach me that. It won't take me long. I'll get better over time, but it won't take me long. We have great staff in the legal, in the legal area, and the great staff in the educational arena and the facilities arena. I'm going to learn those things. And again, if you take those conceptual and strategic skills, I think they're more important, actually. And I think they are portable from Washington to Florida to anywhere else. I think that the strategies that I've employed, and the interpersonal relationship skills that I employ at the legislature in Washington, they come here. It's just going to be different people.
First of all, Terry, I want to thank you for that question. That's an excellent question. Terry thinks more broad-based than I do. I'm a CPA, and I tend to think a little bit more narrow. So my question is a little bit more narrow. I'm interested in learning from you on your baccalaureate programs, and it's kind of a follow-up to some of the concerns Dick brought up, but this takes us internally. How did you deal with the four-year faculty staff, or your baccalaureate staff, and your two-year community college staff? Are they all one staff? Are they all treated similar? Or is there a distinction? Are there distinctions between the two? Because I think that's something we're still battling here, as to, do we have one faculty, or do we have two faculty here?
Right. Great, great question. And one of the early concerns, to not divide the college, right? I think the first, one of the first questions, or the question, Mr. Chairman, you asked about how you make each site feel treated equally. It's the same issue in terms of faculty. So, one first thing is for the president, that would be me, in this case, to, at Peninsula College, to articulate that it's part of our mission, and that teaching and learning is the same, same process, that same essence at first grade as it is at the graduate level. It's that interaction and the quality that happens there. Now, obviously, the conceptual skills and the level of activity is different, based on what level you're teaching. In terms of making people feel different, or creating a separate college, we've taken great pains to make it another program within our workforce training arena. And I know you've, is it biology that you've added in the arts and sciences, I believe? To me, that's an extension of that part of our mission. So that's how we've looked at it. It's an extension of what we do already. Now, specifically, the faculty, what we try to do, is we try to, we have full-time faculty, I should say, we try to use our full-time faculty in the two-year program to teach as much as they can in that program, the ones that are appropriately qualified. We have many, many PhDs, and when we picked the program we did, we picked it based in part on community need, in part on our workforce. And what it does, I mentioned that teacher-scholar model and valuing faculty, it gives our faculty in the two-year program the opportunity to work with a different student, in a different setting, at a different level. And it's, I have to say, it's worked very well. In terms of finance, we've, we have, we use the same, well, we have unions, we use the same contracts, so it's the same contracted amount. The baccalaureate faculty receive an extra stipend for the scholarship that is attached to that level of work. I have not, I've paid very, very close attention with a low threshold factor for me of any ill will, anything negative about it, and I simply have not picked it up.
Follow-up to our chairman's comment on you being an outsider in the state. Would you, when you think about what you're going to do, and how you're going to do it to establish yourself in the state, would you share that with the board? Because possibly, the board could help you open some doors, and what are your thoughts on just how you would get yourself introduced to the state?
Yeah, thank you. That's exactly where I would start. We talked about the first 30 days, establishing a relationship with each of you, and then as a board. And I would be looking to you, for sure, to open doors for me, to meet leaders around the state, and probably start, not probably, start here in Pinellas County. And I've started that process a little bit, in some ways, you know, with some of the local leaders. But I would really, really be looking to you to help me with that. And it might just be, you know, it might be a phone call from you to a friend and colleague in Tallahassee to set me up. We might ride up there and meet somebody for lunch. That's how I see that happening. And then I need to get to know the system, and we have, we, St. Petersburg College has excellent leadership, and with people that have been in the system for a long time, and I'm going to look to them to help do the same thing, probably at a different level, with different individuals. But I think that first, that first year is all-out learning, meeting new individuals, which is not different, I have to say, from what happened to me. Even though I was in Washington, you move to a presidency, you move to a different part of the state, your local legislators, your local leaders are different. And then, and then the study on the systems. But I appreciate you mentioning that, and your willingness, and your, you know, to help connect me. That'll be the, that's the weakness. I don't know people. You know, you can get over that weakness pretty quick by getting to know people.
What has surprised you from your visit thus far?
I'm probably surprised at the most at the depth of the connections with the community. I mean, I mentioned, one of the first things I knew about St. Petersburg College was innovation, and as that relates to the community, I'm really, really, I don't know, surprised, maybe impressed, surprised slash impressed, at the depth in which there's ownership in the college here. And I think it's great, great positioning for the college, you know, probably not a, maybe not an overall strategy. It certainly has left the college in a great position for anything, growth or staving off public funding cutbacks.
St. Petersburg College has been known as a leader for a number of years in the community college system in Florida. And what are your thoughts about continuing that? Because I think what you just said on the answer to Ken's question, some of that community's support, and that we are, we are the community's college, is the way I look at it. And we've done that because we've answered community needs in ways that are different than what others might have done.
Right.
We've set some standards pretty high, and our philosophy, I think, as a board, is to continue to be that leader. And our president's going to have to take that same position, we would hope, because I don't know where the next level is, but that the president will have to take us there. And I don't know whether, what your thoughts might be on, you know, how you keep the burners going, and keep everybody moving forward. Because as a team, you've got faculty, you've got students, you've got staff, everybody's pushing hard to be, and continue to be, that local community's college.
Right. I think there's a time, and this is, I believe, a match, I think there's a time in a college's life, and a leader's career in life, when they can match. And I think there's a time, this is my read, I could be wrong, this is part of the conversation we'd have in those first 30 days, when I said, let's get together and see where we're going to go. But my read right now is that the college faculty and staff have been cranking very, very hard. And it's time to not stop, but to reflect. And I think that's a natural, it should be a natural thing for an organization, to reflect on what we've been doing, and how we've been doing it, and look at our community college mission, and just ask ourselves, is this, how are we doing? It doesn't have to be measurable objectives, it needs to be, how are we feeling about things? What are our pluses and minuses right now? And then, where are we going to go next? And I think the life of this college, it's, when you have a leader that's been in a position for a long time, it's a natural time for the college community, their organizational community, to stop, reflect, and say, how's this going, and are we going to go a different direction? And that, and I base it on our mission. And that's where I would go.
Well, I don't want to see us rest on our laurels. As you said, it's going to be a hard job to follow the individual that's been here for 30 years plus. But we don't want, there'll be a natural pause and a regrouping and a reflection, as you said. We want to continue the excellence that this institution has provided this state, and the community here. And we want that person to be committed to that.
Yep. There's no question, and there's no question that the challenges are out there. And again, one of the attractions of St. Petersburg College is that culture of moving forward and being innovative. And as I said, part of my personality is, and not being told no, that, you know, that can't be done, that's fuel for, we're going to figure out a different way to do it. I mentioned, when we went through our state of Washington, and I think it's, the financial crisis hit us a little earlier and harder than it did here, from what I sense. And as we were going through that, you know, very time of great anxiety, I said, we are not going backwards. Our mission is too important. I said it to one of the, at least one of the meetings I've, you know, attended the last couple of days. The same thing here, we change lives, what this college does, what community college does, we change lives. That is too important to not continue to press forward. You just figure out a different way to do it. I thought of another surprise, by the way. Actually, a true surprise. The joy in which most of the faculty and staff, the joy that they've taken in my video and my most excellent presentation.
Would you care to elaborate, Joe?
What I care is that that video goes far, far away.
I think it's actually on YouTube right now.
Yes, I know it is.
One of the things that I did not see on your list of strengths, and I saw it on a couple other lists, and I'm curious as to, maybe it just wasn't mentioned. Do you consider yourself a change agent?
Generally speaking, I don't like a title, you know? I don't want to fit in a box.
Well, your references obviously knew that, because it's not on there.
I think I've brought about a lot of change to the organizations that I've come to, but I've done it in a way consistent with those guiding principles. And so, if that's what it means, then yes, I am. I want to make sure that we are serving our community and serving our students. And if that's, if that's a change agent, then yes. And I think tossing those principles out there, in itself, is a change, it's been a change for every place I've been, and it creates this fantastic environment, where the ideas aren't coming from one person at the top. The ideas are coming from the thousands of employees that we have, that know much more detailed things than I do in their disciplines and their fields. And that's the way it should work. And so, maybe I would, now that I hear myself say that.
Dr. Keegan, I've been very impressed, but I have a couple of questions for you. And while I appreciate all the concern from most of the folks up here about you getting to know Tallahassee very well, but as long as you and your wife write enough checks, you'll get in with the legislature, I'm sure.
The what?
That's true.
That was not in the announcement.
You know, as the leader of the college, you would be the salesperson of this college, and that's very important, not just for fundraising, but for a lot of reasons. You want to recruit, amongst other things. Take a couple of seconds, a minute or so, and give me a commercial. It doesn't matter what's in your commercial, but how would you sell St. Petersburg College in your, in your commercial?
I would have, we wouldn't use the video that I produced. Or I'll have some other training before we do that, okay? But I think the But I think the messages would be, the two messages. I think number one is, from what I've experienced the last week and what I've experienced for 31 years in community college education, is that there are generations of people that have contact with St. Petersburg College. And you could go, you don't have to go very far away from any individual to find someone connected to them that has some connection with St. Petersburg College, right? So if you ask somebody, did you go to St. Petersburg College? You're either going to get a yes or you're going to get no, but my brother, my sister, my father, my uncle, my mom did. And so you build on that, is my mind, because I'm sure that they had a quality experience because I asked that when I was at the restaurant and the waitress. And that's what I, and I asked that of the community leaders. And what I got was, yes, I know somebody and tell me about it. It was great. And I'm going to turn that great into quality. So my message, my commercial would be, number one, you know this place, and number two, we've got, we have something for you. You make a personal connection for that person. They're not interested, if we're talking about a donor, if we're talking about a student, if we're talking at a partner or a possible partnership, at that moment, they aren't so worried about what it means to somebody else. At that time, they're worried about, do you have something for me? And you build that, you get to the me first by saying, by establishing some trust based on somebody else's experience that they know.
Mr. Chair, a couple more.
You know, the number one thing that you do here at, we do at St. Petersburg College is provide a quality education to students. And our student services, we've been having discussions lately about student services. Just on first blush, since you've been here, what have you seen, I would tell you, let me take that another way. Based upon what you've done in Washington State, what are some of the ideas and strategies that you would bring to the college, to St. Petersburg College, to help enhance what we've already, what we already have here at St. Petersburg College? To help the students have a better quality in student services and life on campuses?
Sure. I think, so related to student services, I think the key thing to think about in terms of student services is that you can't separate it from instruction. You can't. If it sets, whether the org chart does that or not isn't the issue to me. It's, we have to look at that. You base it on that interaction between faculty and student. That's what we're doing. Student services role should focus on that. How, so the questions then, because I'm not going to give specific, you know, programs because we need to develop those together. But the framework for that decision would be, what can student services do to best prepare the student to succeed in that class? It includes things like financial aid, early counsel, career counseling, early work with helping students take their goal and make it relevant to their education so that when they're sitting in a class, it doesn't seem like anything they want to do, but they need it, there's some connection, right? And then I think the other role for student services is to be supportive of the faculty. And they can help faculty in classroom, deal with classroom management issues. They can help faculty deal, you know, working with classroom management, student discipline, same thing in that respect. But I do think that the question, the frame for that needs to be, how does student services facilitate the success of that student in that classroom? And one other just thought about retention. In student service, a lot of colleges, the superficial look at retention is that it's done by student services. And it's not. And you look to student services and say, what's our retention rate? Student services do something about it. Well, student services does a lot about it in terms of financial aid and all those services I talked about. But retention, what we know, it's about what happens in the classroom and it's about engaging a student in the college life. And that's not just a student services issue, that's an instructional issue as well. So how, so the student that drives to college, takes their class, sits in the back row, hops in their car and leaves, statistically speaking, those students are less likely to succeed than the student that drives to campus, goes to a class where there's maybe a group or a team, activity seminar rather than a lecture, or joins a club, joins an athletic team, connects somehow with anybody on campus, joins, I mentioned a club. Those students, statistically speaking, are more likely to succeed. And I think that's a leadership role that student services can take in terms of making sure that engagement is one of the focuses of our student services retention efforts.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question, I'm sorry. Good questions.
My final question is, you talked about being entrepreneurial in the first couple of answers that you had. Give some specific things that you've done where you are that would speak to your entrepreneurial spirit.
Well, I think that the Skill Center building that I talked about would be one. I think the, I don't know if I, I'll just categorize a lot of those things that you've heard about. I think the BAS, the Bachelor's Applied Sciences and Entrepreneurial Activity. I think the Long House was one. I think a couple of examples about programs. We have a dental hygiene program where we only need about six graduates a year in our area, but we, but those are key graduates or employees that are needed. So, but six students isn't enough to offer a program. So we partnered with the leading dental hygiene program in Washington, which is about two and a half hours away. I worked with the local community action council. We built a lab similar to what you have here for low-income individuals and then, which served as the clinical site for the dental hygiene program. The instruction is pumped via interactive television from Tacoma. The clinical work is done in Port Angeles, two and a half hours away. Those students don't need to leave the peninsula in order to get a dental hygiene degree. I'll add one other one related to healthcare programs. Same issue with X-ray technicians. And what I did is I went to the three hospitals. I got a call my first week that said we need more RAD techs, and we weren't able to start the program full bore and they only needed three RAD techs a year. Well, we can't start a program for three, but those three RAD techs that are needed are critical. So what I did is I went to other presidents in the state. I got them to guarantee me three spots in their colleges for our graduates, for our students from the peninsula. We, the faculty designed the prep curriculum for that at our college. And I went to the healthcare providers and they put in $36,000. You divide that by three, that's 12 grand per student. That's what it costs for them to move off the peninsula and pay their tuition and books for a year. The healthcare providers selected the students, the three students, and they were given that $12,000 scholarship for two years. And then they were guaranteed employment if they came back to the peninsula. And if they didn't, it's like the service academies, if they didn't, they had to pay back their $12,000. And so we met that need, we filled that need for about, in about three years. And what we're doing now is, I've been working with the three hospital providers and they've told me they're going to fund a position with benefits for us to make sure that we take that money in that pot. Oh, I forgot to say, when the healthcare provider hired that person after they were educated, they had, it cost them another 12 grand. They put 12 grand back in that pot. So we have that sustainable pot of money. And now what we're doing is we're taking that pot of money, the hospitals are going to hire someone for us to go, so that the president of the college doesn't have to go make deals, that this person can, and the next one we're going to be doing is a physical therapy assistant. So we're going to always have this pot of money and this agreement with the healthcare providers to provide low-enrolled but very critical, important programs. Does that answer your question or give you another?
It does, it does. It wasn't on video, but it is my question.
You got a couple more.
I got one more, I'm sorry, Terry.
No, you keep going.
You've been around the college system, it seems, in Washington State a little bit. And as Mr. Brett said earlier, squeaky clean and have a great reputation. In fact, I think Mr. Burke and I were in Washington DC, was it Washington DC? Someone said the same thing to him and they said to me that you're the superstar of the system in Washington State. What I'm interested to know is you've been around the system, you've been to a couple of places, three or four colleges, I think. And what is the one key thing that you've done on every campus that you think has attributed to your success as a president or an administrator on, in different campuses?
Well, I don't know if I called them guiding principles when I was 25 and a director of student programs, but I practiced those things that I now call principles. So I did develop, so I worked 14 years at the first college and then moved from there to be a vice president. And I, as I think back, I know at the, at the college where I was, first time I was a vice president, I brought principles with me in my mind and we developed some. I took those to the next college where I was executive vice president and the same here. And I would say if there's something that I've done at each place that's helped me and maybe brought some of that reputation, I'd also like to know that person too. So I need two names, the weaknesses and the nice compliments for thank you cards or something else. But I think that's what it is. And it's really just, it's created an environment of trust and openness. And that in itself then has led to great things happening because the individuals in the colleges I've led aren't waiting around for me. They're on their own, they know they're going to be supported, and it creates a great environment.
Well, and I understand that those principles are very good. And I'm not trying to, I think that when I look at it, it could be a double edged sword too, because you have a lot of ideas coming in from a lot of places. And as the leader of the college, how would you in turn take all those, because you're going to have a lot of stuff coming at you. This is a very large county, a lot of people. You're going to deal with legislative sessions and there are 60 days here, I don't know how long they are, in Washington State. And you're going to have a lot of things coming at you. How are you going to deal with all those demands? And you're coming from a much smaller environment. I want to make sure that when you get here, though, you understand there's 900,000 people in the county.
Sure.
Along with the multiple amount of campuses you're going to have to deal with and students. Those guiding principles are great and they have to catch on. How are you going to ensure they catch on? I guess that's the real question.
Same way I did for the last 31 years at four different colleges, and that is to articulate them and model them. That's it. It's a simple way of doing it. About the scope of the colleges in the region, you know, that's something that Suzanne and I talked a lot about. I talked about it with some other presidents that have been mentors over the years to say, what do you think of this thing? And here's where I am on it. It's about three things, what we do. And whether it's about, first of all, it's about people. And whether it's 900,000 people or two people. It's about treating people with respect and those principles apply there. That's what it is. No change, no difference to me. Maybe a little, not a little, I don't want to minimize it, different systems to interact, but it's about people. Number two, it's about mission. And it's the same mission and we are aligned on mission. The strong feeling I get about having a comprehensive mission here with adding the baccalaureate, it's with me. And there's no difference. It's the same thing. And finally, it's about systems. And a system that accounts for $100 million needs to have the same types of controls and processes for a system that tracks $5. So I don't want to minimize it, but I thought a lot about it and wouldn't be doing it if I didn't, wouldn't be here if I didn't think it was something that would work that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Keegan, very much.
Sure, thank you.
I want to tell you that I'm already getting feedback from your, from the staff and the faculty, and it's all been very good. And I'm glad you applied here and you've been very impressive. If you get the job, we'll all be willing to help you, just to our system and to Florida.
Oh, great.
Which is probably different than Washington State, because we don't have any Indians here.
They're all casinos. Yeah. They were very entrepreneurial.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Dr. Keegan, this is totally off the subject here. Port Angeles, is that one of the places where the ferry takes you from the state of Washington over to Victoria?
It is.
Well, I stayed in your fair town. My family and I were on vacation up there. I guess you're like an hour and a half north of Seattle, is that right?
Right, right.
And we were there at the motel and we wanted to go out to dinner. We said, well, where's the best place to eat in town?
Uh-oh.
And she says, you want to go to the bowling alley.
No.
And we, and we end up going to the bowling alley and got a good meal there.
Thanks.
But we enjoyed your town very much for the evening. And everyone was extremely nice.
Well, thank you. I, well, I'm glad. The bowling alley, I've never been there. And Suzanne, Suzanne, I go out to dinner.
I'm always very, but it was good food, my kids enjoyed it, that was the most important thing, so.
Dr. Keegan, just question, more curiosity than anything. Our search consultant, Dr. Hockaday, recruited a lot of folks.
Uh-huh.
I kind of got the sense from your earlier comments that you found us on your own?
I did.
That's good, I like that.
I know Dr. Hockaday and, you know, I haven't been looking for a job. I was, but I'm aware, I know of his work. And that was another thing you do, from being in it for so long, you do associate the consultant that's hired with the type of board that you would be working with and the type of decision they made and who they hired. And that was something that made me feel at ease early on.
Well, he speaks very highly of you, very much so. Any other questions from anyone?
Dr. Keegan, thank you very, very much. This has been a very, very great experience and appreciate all of your candor and your willingness to be here along with Mrs. Keegan. And as you probably know, we have one more candidate to interview next Wednesday, and then we will be meeting as a board the following Tuesday, April 13, to make our decision. So we'll be in touch with you after that date. Any questions you have before we adjourn?
I know we're, I have a couple of questions, but I'll let them go.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Well, you asked me, question number four was, what do I expect in a board-president relationship? I'm curious to know what you expect in a board-president relationship.
I'll tell you, those guiding principles you mentioned probably answered those questions for us. You know, as far as, that's what I expect.
Okay. Everybody else? Same thing? Any other?
I agree.
I agree. I think you're just looking for.
Yeah, you did good there.
To make sure that, you know, information and other things are given out at the same time and making sure that everyone has the same information in a timely fashion, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
I think there's something that we can do too. I heard for some time is that a president never wants to surprise their board members. And I think the same goes on this side of the table, is that we have an obligation that we don't surprise you with anything at board meetings. And so I think it's a relationship that is continually evolving and everybody can improve, including this group here, so.
Great. How about, tell me what you like best about the college? What do you like best about the college, being on the board? What gets you going?
I'm going to speak more generally only because I'm a graduate, my son is here now, and I think somewhere along the line, I heard this story about if you go to any kind of a gathering anywhere in Pinellas County and you ask for a show of hands, as you said earlier, any connection to St. Pete College, most of the hands usually go up. This is such, this is the community's college. It's just, the faculty are so committed during this process, it's been a very interesting process because there's a lot at stake. And we have heard as a board, I know individually and collectively, we have heard from so many faculty, administration, career folks, they live and breathe this institution. And I think it's the best, it's the best asset we have. Mr. Burke?
Adding on to Mr. Brett's comments, what I think we do, and this is not just St. Petersburg College. just St. Petersburg College, but especially St. Petersburg College, but the community colleges in general, and what Harvard does is easy. They take the brightest students with near-perfect SAT scores with, who have 4.8 grade point averages, which I didn't even know existed when I was in high school, I didn't have to worry about that. I think if I had two semesters together, I still wouldn't have gotten there. But the, you know, that's easy. I mean, what we do is change people's lives. And to me, that's the most gratifying thing that we do, is that we change people's lives. Our former president used to say, "We put wings on people's dreams", and I like that expression. And I think we do. And we see it all the time. I'm on the alumni board, Terry and I are past presidents on the alumni board, Terry and I both attended here, we both have sons who are currently here, and we heard the stories there, and I still hear them there, of the students, the lady who, in her 50s, who said she came to the campus five times, and she had to pry her hands off the steering wheel to get enough courage to come in, and now she's, was being interviewed for our outstanding graduate award, you know, and how she changed as a person in two years here. That's why I'm on this board. I mean, I think this college does more to change people's lives for the most positive way. We're the, like, we're the avenue for first-time college experience, we're the avenue for minorities to get education and improve their lives, and that's what we're about. We take, we're like the story of America, like the Statue of Liberty says, "Give us your tired, your poor, your hungry, you know, we'll help you improve and give you that opportunity." And we're the place that really is the American dream, we're the opportunity college. And we have a graduation coming up, we just got the invitation here to, again, participate, and they're wonderful occasions, and we, our graduations are not dignified affairs, they're rambunctious affairs, they're beautiful affairs, but we see families there cheering and yelling when their graduate comes through, and that's heartwarming, and we love it. And that's what St. Petersburg College means to me.
And we have an astronaut that's going to be our speaker.
That's how you do.
Graduate, right?
And I wanted to say that both of my sons went to SPC. My oldest son is a physician, and my youngest son is a congressman.
Wow, that's great.
And they started here at this college.
Great.
Mr. Chair, well, Dr. Keegan, since you asked, quite frankly, I'm on the board because I like the cookies that they had at the board meeting.
What? What are you?
On a serious note, I, to echo all of the things that these, the other folks have talked about, the college, I was a three-year-old, and my mother attended this college. And while she was in class, there was a librarian here named Ms. Jones, who taught me how to read. And when I got into first grade, true story, I wanted to go with the slow learners because they got cookies and lunch. And.
Still with the slow learners?
That's right, Terry. And the principal happened to be the roommate of Ms. Jones, her name was Lou Graves. And Ms. Graves came to my classroom and said, "Devron, show this lady you can read." And in every graduation, Dr. Cutler would have people stand for as long as they had been in college to complete their AA. Sometimes we have people standing for 35 years. And the reason that I think that I'm on this board is, I appreciate the fact, a college, a learning institution that anybody can learn at, whether you were 55, 95, three years old, it has truly turned into the community's college. It's not the colleges, you know, it's not the other way around. We truly take pride in St. Petersburg College. It has taken on, it's taken bold steps to do a lot of things, but one thing that it doesn't do is leave people out. And we got to continue to be that college.
That's great. Thank you, thank you. Great to hear.
I think what you're hearing, Dr. Keegan, is the commitment of the board, and I think that's one of the, it's been one of the strengths of this college, and I've had a chance to participate for several years, and.
He was here when us found it.
But I didn't eat all the cookies, though.
I did.
But I think you're seeing what this group's about, and the same thing, I think, goes for everybody in the audience here. Everybody here wants to see that student, and going back to where Ken was, I remember one of my first graduations, a mother, she hadn't been a mother, she walked across the stage, and she must have had a whole bunch of kids, because they made more noise, and they say, "Out of the way, mum!", you know, and it just echoed all over the place. And it makes your heart feel warm. And I watched some statistics a few years ago, that our students that come in here generally don't do as well on the SAT scores as the ones that go take to University of Florida. But our AA graduates that go to the University of Florida, statistically, grade-wise, outperform those native students who were there the first two years.
That's true.
And that tells you an awful lot, because students that come in here, generally come in here, come here ill-prepared for college life. We have to, we have to deal with that and understand it, and have to build them up. And I think we do that and do a good job of it, because if they can do just as well as the native students who go to our finest universities in Florida, and do just as well as not better, then it makes you feel like you've done something.
Yep.
That's all.
So great to hear.
Okay, again, thank you, very much appreciated.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. I apologize. I may have got the guy. I just want to thank the board also. I want you to know how well we've been treated by the college community at all the sites. And Courtney helped, just got us here safely and in order, and Patty Jones has never made, what do you call it, fingerprinting as exciting as I. Not that I've ever done it before, of course. But Amelia and Al were just incredible hosts, and they gave a lot of time, I want the board to know that.
And you know, I, and I'm glad you did that, because I have acknowledged them in our past meetings, and I was remiss today, and I apologize for that, for Amelia and Courtney and Al May for being your host over the last few days.
All right, Al. Thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah.
I do have one more.
Mr. Burke?
The other related items.
Just one thing, I think at the end of our interview next time, we need to discuss what our philosophy is going to be going into our final meeting.
Okay.
I just think it would be good, you know, during the search committee, we always came prepared with names to vote on. I hope this is more of a discussion among the board, that we just don't come with the idea, because I want to learn from y'all as to your perceptions and so forth, and we just need to think about whatever our strategy is going to be, so that we're clear going into that meeting, where we're deciding how we're going to go about the decision-making on that.
Well, Ken.
I concur.
I remember Dr. Hockaday saying we would narrow it from two to four.
Four to two.
Four to two.